Just say when you're ready.
No, the TV screens turn on.
Both this one's on and that one's on.
Alright, fair enough, alright. I was going to call to order the Salem Lake City, uh, special town, what are we, work session. Uh, discussion items, Villages at Cascade Head, preliminary master plan presentation and discussion. Can we start together with introductions? Is there certain ones?
Hello, my name is Steve Faust with 3J Consulting. Uh, I met many of you recently with COVID Owens Green, uh, working on the, uh, economic opportunities analysis and housing needs analysis, um, leading, uh, we're the lead consultant for this, uh, project.
And I'm Lawrence Kavara of Kavara and Associates Architecture Town Planning, and, uh, we've all seen each other many times in the past with, uh, Nelskott Cap project, working with, uh, with you on this.
Susan Walkie, City Council.
Kim Ward.
Judy Casper.
Mayor Don Williams.
Kathy Steer, City Reporter.
Deanna Hinton.
Dick Anderson.
Ron Chandler.
Richard Jones, City Planner.
Okay, um, and for the purposes of this meeting, the mics pick up pretty much what we say, want to remind everyone just to speak one at a time because more than one at a time it gets muddled up. If anyone's going to speak from the departments, at least the board will speak to yourself and join the conversation. So, Ron or Lawrence?
Ron.
Richard Schultz.
Okay, okay, um, what we're here for tonight is look at the, uh, draft preliminary master plan for Villages at Cascade Head property. It's, uh, we put out our special proposals and ended up selecting, well, just the team that was then headed by COVID Owens Green and then by, by 3J, yeah, consultants. Uh, they've been working on it for, uh, several months, uh, through a few iterations, you may have seen some of the earlier versions of it. Uh, we also have been talking with the property owners, the large property owners and surrounding property, uh, Camp West Wind, um, Forest Service, uh, School District, uh, we'll be talking to other, some of the others in the area as well. Uh, and we also have been talking with, uh, two of the property, remember that the Villages Cascade Head property is not owned entirely by the city. It's, uh, 20 acres is owned by, uh, Lincoln Highlands Limited Partnership and another 20 acres by Nelson Creek LLC, which is based in Florida. So, we're talking with, with those property owners, uh, about how the, the plan will play out. Uh, what we have tonight, as I said, is the, uh, a draft of the plan and it's for you to look at and comment on in, uh, you have, you have two hats to wear. One hat is for the property owner. And, uh, so the question is, is this the way you want this to proceed? And that's really the main hat we're asking you to wear tonight, not as, as the, the city councilman who, uh, may ultimately have a decision to make on this in an official capacity, but really as, as property owners to see if we're on the right track and this is where you want to go. So, uh, Steve Faust from 3J will, will kick this off and I think hand off, hand it off to Lawrence.
Thank you, Richard, that's exactly right. Um, I just wanted to mention that also on our team, uh, Todd Chase from FCS Group, which, um, uh, he did the, uh, market feasibility study in the existing conditions report and then Rich Catlin from Recent Associates, uh, is doing the civil engineering work, so, um, that's the full complement of our team. But, uh, the concept that you will see, uh, tonight is really the work of Lawrence, so I will, uh, run the power down and let him, uh, give the presentation.
Alright, thank you. Um, I'm going to stand right about here, which I think, hey, for you all to see, is this a good, good image? You see me there as well? Okay, it's very, well, it's, alright, well, um, we have advanced the plan that you saw back, oh, gosh, I don't know what the exact date was, it feels like it was a couple of months ago, um, which was the first, uh, iteration of a, a remaster planning of, uh, of the site. Um, this is a spectacular view from up above the Knoll. The Knoll is really the, sort of pinnacle, literally, physically and, uh, spiritually, you could say, of the, of the Villages Cascade Head property. Um, overlooking to the south, all of, uh, Lincoln City, uh, the beaches, the, uh, Rose End neighborhood, you can see the curving road, the cul-de-sac that comes along, uh, as the, as the one piece of road that was put in, the main piece of road, uh, of West Devils Lake, north, northeast Devils Lake Boulevard. Um, so it's a, it's a spectacular sight, you can see some of the other neighborhoods that were really fitting within and amongst all of this, all of this area. The Holly Farm is up back behind this curve of the road and that's an interesting new, uh, addition to the, uh, to the adjacency, I should say, not addition to, uh, the property as well. Next. Just, uh, we've seen some of these images, but just a real fast review, basically about where we are again, in relationship to the rest of the world. Uh, Lincoln City, I have this labeled as Nelskott, guess I'm recycling an older drawing when we're talking about Nelskott, uh, but just to remember where we are in relationship to Portland, up and down the coast, Salem, just directly out, of course, you all know this and Eugene down below, but this is a great location and it's one of the key locations that people come out to the coast, but it's also a place where people live. And what I love about this project is that it is finally an ideal opportunity, an ideal neighborhood, for these to be real neighborhoods for residents, for workforce housing. Uh, it's not oceanfront, uh, it doesn't have quite that allure in the same manner, but nonetheless, the ocean is an important part of why all of you live here. So, the people that are working here or living here, they, they like the ocean as well, as well as connecting to nature. So, there's this dichotomy between nature, the ocean, the forest and the city that this plan is all about. Next. This was the original, uh, Villages at Cascade Head, uh, proposal from a number of years ago, that we have been tasked with reviewing, analyzing, studying, and then proposing an update to how this, uh, this original plan was laid out. You can see very clearly, you'll remember the green corridors, the street networks, these are all, um, you know, something that we, we, that builds the site, that creates the framework, the lattice, you could say, that, you know, that the vines are growing upon. Um, and a very limited network of streets, there's West, uh, Devils Lake Boulevard making its way up through, as well as Salicy, this was shown in one little street and was shown in a big looping continuation of, um, Devils Lake Boulevard, moving all the way up into the high area, the Highlands up here. Uh, this 60 acres to the north has been designated as open space for beauty. Uh, the Knoll is roughly around where Anne is located, but you can see that, um, there was a limited network of roads, but there would have been a heck of a lot more roads, of course, in each of these developable areas. So, while you see very few road, very little road network here, there would have been a lot of, most likely, you know, cul-de-sacs and looping roads, looping on and off of that network making its way through. Uh, also, this area to the east has been, uh, designated to the Seles tribe, uh, to the golf course, uh, property, so that has been removed from the Villages. And, uh, you can see also that this connects all the way out to Highway 101. That's a key, uh, issue, we believe, that the property, we call this the panhandle. Let's move to the next slide. We've, um, this was our initial analysis of the basic three generalized areas. Area one, that is close up to the existing Voyage development, uh, that has Devils Lake Boulevard running through it, that's in mostly the lowlands, this is much lower, relatively flatter, nothing's flat out here, but, you know, less steep, uh, slopes within this area. North of, or to the east of that, we call that the panhandle, area two, is the one that makes its way out and touches upon Highway 101, but is a heavily forested area up north here. And then finally, area three, which is the most thickly forested portions of the property, um, and the steepest, the steepest hillsides rising up here, um, and the trail that makes its way, there's a road up here and then it's a little dead end off of Salicy, where, uh, nowadays people hike up to the Knoll. I understand there is another little trail back through here as well to pass this way up. Um, let's see, anything else?
Lawrence, let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
Um, are you showing where we are on that map with your hand tool?
With this pointer?
Yeah, or are you just?
My hand.
Is that what you're doing? Because those, there are a lot of people interested in this and I'm assuming that a lot of people are watching this at home and they can't see where you're pointing.
Steve is sort of following the laser with the cursor.
Thank you.
Yeah, and maybe actually I should just simply speak, can you all see this in the room? The, the red, yeah, okay, okay, so we'll continue with this. Um, next slide.
Excuse me, Lawrence, can you point out to the Holly Farm property?
The Holly Farm, good point, is right in the white, in the center. Uh, and, and there's another piece of Holly Farm down there, there are two sections of the Holly Farm, which we'll see on an aerial map eventually. Next. So, actually, something else to say about that last map, and you'll, but you'll see it, you'll see it in the next upcoming maps and you'll recall that we started to understand that that high, the Highlands up here, rising up to the Knoll, across, what you can see right here is the creek, uh, there is, there is Salicy, there is the creek, Logan Creek that makes its way up into the hills, uh, here is West Devils, or northeast Devils Lake Boulevard, and there's a little piece of, of the Holly Farm off in the corner. But it's this area that we called area number three, rising up to the Knoll, very difficult to develop up there, we, we feel, you know, from what we can understand through the analysis that was done by our civil engineer, Rich, uh, Rich Catlin from, uh, Recent Associates, um, there was an understanding that, you know, part, only part of that property could be accessed by, uh, for water service, uh, a new water tower would need, would need to be added for a certain analysis that they had done, but also really looking at how the roads were, would potentially have been developed up there, be quite difficult, there's a lot of 20% grade, which means steep, very steep and difficult to build roads on, let alone housing developments. So, it was in that last, you know, slide we looked at of areas one, two and through, three, that we wanted to float this idea that we did already bring past you last time, that maybe, this is really left alone, at least, uh, for the meantime, and focus on area number one very intensely with a more compact kind of development, more compact, walkable, mixed-use development, as well as then, uh, stretching out around area number two, because we need to get, we want to get a certain number of, of, you know, homes and workforce housing actually off, provided here in this plan. The idea was to then, let's look at, we're preserving area number three to the north, and that's what the plan that we'll then, we'll show you in a moment, uh, represents. Next. This is the, this is the aerial photograph, you can see these orange areas are designations of that 20% slope. Uh, it's pretty steep up there and there are some areas that don't have quite that same slope, but getting a road up into all of that would be rather difficult. I'd like to also point out this red line, I hope it's visible, this red line is the boundary of the Villages property, um, that runs all, you know, all the way along here and along Salicy. A portion of this, uh, we have revised over here and, uh, because that has been taken out, um, and provided and, uh, moved over to the, to the property of the, of the Seles tribe. You're also seeing here these blue lines that are radiating out from a central point here. We found this to be a very interesting location, where this horseshoe, we call it, the horseshoe in, uh, Devils Lake Road wraps around a bit of a hill here that has a, a nice elevation and as you get up on a cherry picker, about 20, 25 feet off the ground, you can see out to the horizon, straight out to the west. So, we started thinking of these radiating views and what could be seen if there were all the way up to the Knoll, you can very clearly see the Knoll today from that point at the horseshoe, but you can also get a little bit of a sense within an area from where the slopes occur on a hill here, on the north, and then down to the south, somewhere around here, pretty much through this area, you can see fairly well out to the ocean, if you were a little bit higher, and if there were some view corridors that were cut through here. Now, the next slide is going to show you this concept of making a street of view corridors, that when you frame a view off of the distance and open that view up by looking simply down a street, you can see something at the other end of it, if it's a fairly straight street. And if you can't actually see it, you at least meander and can move down a curving street, uh, and get to a destination off in the distance. And I like to think in these terms, as, as far as making a center and then being able to connect out both visually, visually up to the Knoll, but also to be able to walk and drive and bike down a, down a street. Next. Much like this as an example, I think this tells the story, you know, hey, this is a very diagrammatic type of plan of a place that I traveled to not long ago over in Germany that has a very distinct center and has these radiating, uh, both streets through the urban core up to the north part of it, but way out into this rural, uh, thick park. This is a city center, but it was built upon an old palace, but it's such a great example of seeing a center and radiating views and radiating direct ways to get out and the combination of urban and rural all in one. Next. You've seen these kinds of places with radiating diagonals, uh, in our federal capital of Washington DC, um, a very, you know, very diagrammatic almost in a sense of making a center where the White House happens to be and putting a circle around it. It's, it's kind of a simple way of saying, this is a center and this is radiating out to the edges. Next. But it doesn't have to be in that kind of a, of a rigid, uh, straight line manner, it can also be very fluid and organic, that idea of, again, being at a center here and radiating out in a rural kind of flowing manner, this is by the great friend Paul Olmsted, uh, who was a, you know, great American planner, planned Central Park, uh, in New York City, but also many, many towns and villages and neighborhoods throughout the country, as well as his, uh, his partners, the Olmsted brothers. Uh, we have some of these in the, you know, in the Seattle region and, uh, in Portland. Next. This finally is the plan that you all did see a couple of months ago, this is my first version, first hand drawing, and it's building very much on that idea of being in a center up on that, um, up on that horseshoe, on that Knoll, and by the way, there's a wonderful, uh, amphitheater in the woods, that is hike up into the, into the woods here, look down into this gorgeous amphitheater, it just feels like a natural place that you could see a perfor, you can imagine a performance opened up a little bit in the woods, but also taking those lines and, and theoretically bringing a straight line right on out to the ocean and seeing straight down that street, uh, connecting into Logan Creek and Salicy that runs along it, making a couple of street connections, we showed one here and, and down here, but also taking those radius and looking all the way up to the, to the Knoll and looking down, actually, the existing streets of Voyage and fitting the existing streets into this pattern of a radiating network that comes to that center. Uh, down along Devils Lake Boulevard as well, these come in in a more meandering way, so it's a combination of both the organic and the, and the more, uh, you know, precise geometric ways of laying out roads, but these are the things that provide, these are not just patterns and designs, they actually give people on the ground, whether they're walking, biking, or even driving, they give them orientation, they connect them to an important building of some sort that might be here, or they connect them out to a view, but it also integrates big natural areas to the north with a, with a concentrated core. So, I'll be talking about the idea of being in a more concentrated center around here and then radiating out in density also, from higher density to lower density kinds of housing. Uh, next. And this is, this is just further emphasizing where actually they would leave, there would be a fairly good view shed to see the horizon, uh, from this point, and it's because there's a hill right about there and there's a hole right about there, and if you get a sense up on that bit of a knoll, they can see further out and of course, again, maybe the knoll. Next. So, that was the old plan, this is the new update to the plan. We, uh, the previous plan, I sort of, I was loose and I was kind of relaxed and drawing a little outside the boundaries, looking outside the property, but of course, we've got to focus on the, on the Villages Cascade Head property owned by the city and a couple of other property owners, but tropper, and, uh, that's what we have done here, and we've looked very closely at all property owners, we've started to recognize that, you know, within these, within the, the developed area where one property owner would connect to another, um, but we've also expanded on creating a more clear, made three neighborhoods, one to the north of the Holly Farm, one to the west where we spoke about, that's sort of the village center or town center, and then one down to the south, and again, each of these looking closely at the properties, uh, that are, that are underlaid on all of this and not, you know, not a flowing outside of the boundaries in this plan. Next. A little more detail now, um, I'm going to walk through, as you can see this plan brought back up several times as we walked through some of it, many of the, of the aspects and elements of this. This park, this park in the center and this park to the north are the three centers, let's call them the three villages, um, the southern village, the middle village, and the, and the northern village. By the way, the Holly Farm is a key element in all of this. Since the project started, we learned that the school district purchased this property. That's spectacular, we feel, it's incredible to be able to have in the midst of the Villages property, a new school site that whether it's going to be an elementary, a middle school, it's going to have, we understand there's a need for a bus parking, bus barn, um, and, and other facilities, it's a 54 acre site that goes out to about this line on the eastern edge and then within that rectangle, and there is a stream running through it and some, a little bit of steep slopes along the edge of that stream, but it's actually very high ground, particularly in this area along the western edge of it. So, we feel there's a real opportunity perhaps, that if a school was placed somewhere in this area, it would be directly to the east of what we're seeing as this sort of key town center, village center, uh, with the amphitheater right in front of it. Maybe there's some shared opportunities, maybe there's a, the use of the amphitheater by the school, uh, maybe there's some opportunities for shared parking between, you know, up on the school and the, and whatever is in this village center. Um, we're also carefully bringing in and preserving this natural forest park, let's call it. The forest park to the north of Logan Creek really opens up some wonderful opportunities to be able to walk down these lanes, along this lane that, that parallels, uh, Logan Creek and cross over on key locations, it could be little foot bridges like this, or foot bridge up around the, the northern edge, or come off the street and walk up through the, through the woods. There's opportunities, of course, for various kinds of, of forest, um, you know, activities, somebody's mentioned zip lines through the forest or, or hiking, just lots of hiking trails. The relationship of a school to a forest park like that, the street going through it, great educational opportunities. Um, there's a small little, uh, flag lot that comes out here that actually has a, a lane, or could be a lane going straight out to it and on two sides of the end of this stream, so we put a little housing out there, but for the most part, we've worked with this existing little piece of housing that was previously planned in the old plan.
That's Fernwood.
Fernwood, Fernwood. So, Fernwood has housing in the middle of, of this peanut shaped, uh, loop road and it has housing on the outside. We have proposed here that the center be left unbuilt as a park and that the, the outer edge there has a little bit of higher density housing that faces into that park, could be a wonderful central park, but also you're going to see a lot of alleyways, we'll show you some details as to what alleyways look like in reality. You've, you know, you've got some alleyways right here in, in Lincoln City, uh, Olivia Beach, for instance, that alleyway would be where the parking is, the cars, and this front lane would just would be, you know, continuous front porches, front doors, looking out into this park. So, we've got that kind of a park that connects down a rather steep hillside that seemed fairly unbuildable, that would connect down to the stream and out onto what we assume or understand would be the, uh, extension of the golf course perhaps, we don't know, that's off, that's off-site, but, uh, that's what it is today. Um, similarly, we've talked about the center with the, uh, with the amphitheater in this city. This up to the north though, is a much higher point, this is actually a ridge line running through here and while we can't, you know, stand on that ridge and see through the forest and see whether we look up to the, out to the ocean or up to the Knoll, we feel pretty confident that due to the height of that and researching the topography, there'd be some good views out from there. So, instead of putting a, you know, a big mansion on top of that hill, we put a park so that it's a place that could be shared by everybody, um, you can come from anywhere in the, you know, in the city and, uh, go on up to that park and be able to see out to something, but it's also where people live. Um, next slide. We want to talk about the gradations now, that you can achieve within this, uh, this kind of a plan. You've seen in these colors from the higher density red to the medium density orange to the lower density light yellow to the very lower density, more rural lots, which were all delineated on that last plan, um, you, you're, what you're seeing there is a gradation of uses and housing types. In the center, red zone, right around that, that horseshoe, we are proposing something more like a, you know, a mix of shops and perhaps a shop with, shops with, uh, residences up above. Now, it's not going to be a great high-end retail location, it's a destination of some sort, you know, it's, the best you might want there is not to think of that as, it's not going to be a place for any kind of big box retail, any kind of large shopping store, no, it's going to be a small couple of cafes, um, maybe a, a little restaurant, uh, maybe some kind of a service that could provide something for up in the woods, the actual rural side of this whole equation here. Might be, uh, uh, you know, a, a mountain Viking shop or something that's up in this little, little village center. The idea being that that happens over here to the east in a more urban center and that we have a gradation all the way out to nature, and that's really what you've been, I'm showing you in this, in this plan. So, this is a concept that was developed by some colleagues of ours and actually literally my professors many years ago, Dwanne Quaid or Seiberg, and this is a simple idea about form, called form-based coding, that you have a more urban type of a street and the next block out becomes a little more rural, a little looser, a little larger lot, and you get out to the rural edge. Next. And here's some, some images that give you that kind of an idea, from the more urban center, that's actually the main street of Florence, um, to townhouses, perhaps the next layer out, to small, single-family lot houses, uh, in the next block out, to larger lots with more trees, more green, more space. So, you get a little bit of all different kinds of housing products within just a very short five-minute walk from the center to the edge. Next. So, there again, there's the central, you know, the center of the, of the neighborhood, uh, the central, uh, I've, the exact wording that we had.
Centurial gravity?
Center of gravity, yeah, it's the center of gravity, it's the, it's the center zone, and so, you know, just center general edge and then rural edge. The orange is the next middle zone, the yellow is the outer edge, and the farthest out edge is way up in the northeast here, and we're seeing that just as large lot, you know, maybe these are, you can determine what these sizes are, but maybe they're half acre, quarter acre lots, maybe in, you know, in the yellow here, maybe these are 5,000, 6,000 square foot lots, perhaps in the orange, these are down to more small apartment, uh, what, you know, small apartment buildings that they actually have further south here, but maybe a little more attractively done, and, uh, and row houses perhaps, and then finally in the center, it might be, um, it might be a little retail shops, a couple of, a couple of shops around the corners here, it also could be where there are apartments, um, so affordable housing, workforce housing. This kind of a layout provides different ranges and different income levels that can live in a close-in, mixed-use and mixed-income neighborhood. live in a close-in, mixed-use and mixed-income neighborhood. This is what the center could look like, for instance. These are actually examples of development that I've worked with up in Washington Seabrook that was with, with a developer that you all, some of whom may know, Casey Roloff, that did Olivia Beach and Bella Beach down here in this area. But this is the newest project that we've been working on for the last over 15 years or so. This was an early-on rendering of a, that I did of a main street looking out to the ocean. Again, a kind of telescope view pointing out to the sea. These are some of the very first shops, a lot more retail, mixed-use shops are going in right now, in fact. But these were inexpensive, one-story shops, pretty inexpensive to build. That's actually a metal building with roll-up garage doors and some nice paintings, some vegetables put on the front. That's the little tiny market in the middle of the, of the village. And this is the cafe that you're seeing over to the right. You actually could move forward, that's, that's fine. And these are examples from other places, up and down the coast here. This is in Portland, this is, you know, these are simple, two, three-storied, some of them look like houses, some of them literally were houses here. The one on the bottom here was designed as a, as a big, kind of a house with a big shop on the ground floor. Somebody might be actually living above these and operating the store downstairs. You know, both, two mortgages under one, under one roof, or it might be an apartment that's for rental above. Next. Also, in the center of these kinds of neighborhoods and villages are civic institutions. These are just a couple of examples, a chapel, you know, places of worship are gathering places where people come to. And if you can walk to it, walk to a place like this in the middle of a neighborhood, all the more that it's an active, what we call a third place. You've got the places you live, places you work, and then the place where you socialize with your community. And that might be the Quinault Lodge, you know, that's actually in the woods up in the northwest. But that kind of, it could be an iconic, important kind of destination like that, like a lodge, or it could be a chapel. So those are civic uses, in a way. Next. And again, that can happen, perhaps that's happening here. Perhaps each one of these centers has that sort of central place. But of course, the next one is going to be the school. There's nothing like a school as a, as a community gathering place. These are, these are just, you know, mentioned. Evoked the idea that a neighborhood school literally is surrounded by houses, by, by homes, by streets and trails, ways that people can, and children can walk to and from school. Next. So again, imagine what that school site could provide in terms of three neighborhoods wrapping around it and housing and opportunities for people to walk in. Making great streets is, is an important part of this. Streets that are beautiful to walk on, not only because they're convenient locations such as schools or places of worship or maybe a shop that you can walk to or bike to in a short distance, but that actually the streets themselves are beautiful places. The way to make beautiful streets, first and foremost, most, is to push the garage door back from the face of the house. This is the way to, best way to do it, to actually have alleyways in the rear. If you have an alleyway in the back, as you'll see in places like Olivia Beach, you can have carriage houses, garages off the back. These alleyways actually become very attractive places to walk and bike and tuck your car away. You can still park on the street in the front. With a larger lot, you can have a garage door come off, or a garage driveway come off the front and have the garage pushed back from the face of the house. I'm not showing those examples, but that is another way of doing it on a larger lot. And also pathways cutting through the blocks like this, between fence lines, two houses on either side. Next. This is not what we're talking about, which is really very conventional, which you see a great deal. This is what builders have been producing for the last 50 years or so, yes. Garage doors up front, they tend to say that a car lives here rather than seeing the face and the liveliness of the people that are living inside the house. When you've got, when you've got a garage pushed back or around the back that we were just looking at, and the, and the front doors and the porches on the front of a house, that enlivens the street. It makes the street a more interesting and inviting place as you walk past neighbors and perhaps chat with a couple of people that are in their front yards. That doesn't quite happen as often in these, sort of, the same way in these neighborhoods. Next. But also, the character of these, of the housing can be very local and vernacular and rural in its, in its feel. These are various examples up and down the coast here, where you're fitting houses ancient in the woods still. It's not a matter of taking down all the woods. There's going to be some trees cut to be able to, cut down to be able to create some neighborhoods like this, which could also fit in and amongst the woods, in amongst the trees that are there, and have that more rural or in coastal character that is really beloved and is what people are, you know, people like to live out here for. Next. But you can also have very small, affordable workforce housing, scattered housing. You know, somebody gets out of, out of school and they, they have a job that isn't paying a lot at early on, so they need a small house. Maybe it's a single person or a couple of people. They might grow up from little tiny cottages that, these are actually great old historic Aladdin company from the 1920s. We're still building some of those. You know, not many people are building them that small, but this is, you know, I'm finding that increasingly so, the tiny house movement has really, has really come alive. But you can move up eventually to this house down on the bottom right, which again, they were making kit houses by Sears and Roebuck and the Aladdin company back in the 1920s. We wonder if we'll have those again. Next. And that kind of mix of housing could be, you know, fitting in anywhere in any of these. You know, along these edges, could be the larger houses that look out to the view. Yes, it's going to be a little bit more luxury, luxurious if you're looking out to the green and you're on a bit of a larger lot. But how wonderful it'd be to live in the center of one of these villages where the, where the smaller lot, the smaller house, or a house that fills the lot and just uses more of that land more effectively and more efficient. Next. And then those gathering places, those parks that are in the center of the, of these neighborhoods, of these villages. There's the parkland and the forest to the outer edges, and we'll see some ideas of that in a moment. But this is what can happen in the middle. Playgrounds for children, places where people celebrate life, have weddings, you know, in the, in the middle of a park with houses, you know, wrapping around it. Or the idea of what could that amphitheater in the middle of the woods in that horseshoe possibly be with trees surrounding it and, and in and amongst itself. Such as Olivia Beach. You can see how we, you know, carefully actually fit houses in and amongst some of the existing trees here, preserve some of the trees in the, you know, in the park. But also, trees, you know, trees were removed to create something that was, you know, that was community-based. The houses that face onto the park, that face onto the street, the lane that wraps around it. Next. And just seeing that, that same Olivia Beach Park, a central park, a central gathering place in the middle of houses wrapping around it and a little lane going out. Next. Again, that's the kind of park that we're seeing down in the south here. Again, Fernwood, that's the name of it, is the Fernwood area. That could be very much that same-sized park, the park in the middle as, as the amphitheater or a little park on the, on that ridge top to the north. But look again at these large forested areas and along, taking that forested area, preserving it, that comes along Logan Creek. So let's see what that might look like potentially. Now, it's this kind of place, preserving the forest. So this plan is very much about creating compact urban, walkable, mixed-use neighborhoods that have trees in and amongst them, but also preserving the forest to the north by way of, of sort of concentrating the community in the, in the lower land where it's easier to build so you can really preserve this kind of a place. Next. And out to the water, out to, out to, south, along Salassee and along Logan Creek. Imagine boardwalks, perhaps, along the edge of that water. It's a very narrow road, Salassee, right now. It's a narrow dirt road. So we actually have an idea that, and once we go back to the plan, and I think we have another review of that plan, I'll get to that in a moment, I'll come back to this idea of the plan and theories, that this could potentially be able, maybe this is a one-way piece of street coming on the existing piece of Salassee and then the one-way going north in here in the village's property and connecting back up like that. So if you're coming south off of that, you could go one way like that. If you're coming north, you would go one way like this. As a way of keeping that narrow street, that narrow dirt road right now as a slow-moving, calm, kind of localized street with a beautiful, it's a boulevard effectively, with a boulevard in the center that consists of the stream itself and a significant buffer of the existing beautiful riparian zone and, and the trees, the line of trees there. Next. And then finally, up to the top, preserving this as a place in perpetuity that has these tremendous views you can walk up to, and this is for everybody, for the public. And just to quickly review those ideas, this is a walkable, diverse neighborhoods where living, working, shopping, learning, playing in the neighborhood. Streets as community places, not as just places to drive and for transportation alone. Walking and biking to and in the neighborhood. Housing for all stages of life, from higher density to lower density, and preserving and celebrating nature. Other key elements are to preserve the northern portion as a forested uplands, concentrated, compact, mixed-use, walkable urban villages, village centers closer, closer into town, closer into where the development already is. And so the previous plan that pushed that, the idea of center a little further out into the woods as it was, located one limited mixed-use village center at that horseshoe, greenway trails that follow wetlands and streams that define the neighborhood edges, a parkway street that buffers the wetland corridor of Salassee as I was, I was just describing, houses sprinting toward the parkway. And then emphasizing views to the ocean and to the knoll by the line of street views as, as view corridors. Next. Connecting habitat and trail networks to the knoll through open spaces, parks and street cars, designing all the streets within with parallel parking with sidewalks and with planting strips. So every street has, is a walking way and is a biking way as well. And very important, when you think of streets as being big, you know, big asphalt and concrete, one of the biggest problems with a lot of, of new streets is that you put the, the concrete sidewalk right next to the asphalt. The old way that we used to design streets was you have a planting strip and the trees are, are on the edge there and the sidewalk is inboard for that. Important little detail. Using alleyways for vehicle access to the backs of houses, allowing, allowing accessory dwelling units, Adu's, in the rear of those lots. Preserving the trees in small pocket parks or in larger lots. So there's a lot of forest still even in the developable area. There are some good strategies, strategies that we have in order to be able to preserve a good number of, of the trees and the, and the wood, that is, the woods that are there. Capturing views in the village-centered park at the ridge line north of the Holly Farm. Yes, this is, there's a northern ridge I pointed out there above the Holly Farm that really could be another great center up there. And then creating a peanut-shaped park in Fernwood down to the south. Next. Not going to go through this in detail, this is actually Todd Chase's work, but just to emphasize that there is a mix that, at the very bottom, he says, yes, 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 even yes, and for single-family detached, for townhomes, for apartments, for apartments that are, could be from, with a nonprofit developer, for more for a billion, and then finally, commercial hotel and mixed use. And that's the one in which he says marginal. You know, so we realize there's not a lot of opportunity for commercial hotel and, and mixed use there. But we've identified a place in that center that says, this is where you could put it if somebody wants to step up to play and, and do so. Yes?
You mentioned he.
Who is he? Todd Chase.
And he is?
Todd Chase with FCS Group. He is the consultant, subconsultant to 3J.
He's our accountant.
Accountant. Who did the analysis. I believe he spoke with, with the group here back.
The planning commission.
The planning commission a few months ago. What's the density, what are the units, what are the unit counts here? You know, because originally there were 18, a little over 1,800 units, 1,800 housing units in the village's plan. We have about, about one-half of that in this plan. And that is, again, a combination of the center zone, moderate density zone, low density zone, rural density zone. The different kinds of housing types that are used in that. The center zone would have row houses, small apartments, condos, and some of them over retail. There could also be just simple one-story retail if there was retail at all, or, you know, to, to the extent that it would be. In the moderate zone, row houses duplexes and small detached homes and then accessory dwelling units. And the low density, medium and large lot, single-family, and finally, larger lot, single-family, that quarter acre, half acre. And you can see the unit counts, 85, 325 in the moderate, 305 in the low density, 190, for a total of 915 units. So this is less than what the original plan was, but we do feel that a certain amount of that original plan may not have been completely realistic in its, in its projections. And also to, to remember that we can, we can play with these numbers. You know, the lower density areas, if you want to raise the density, we can, we can also simply ratchet up, dial up the, the rural density or low density to what is marketable. Next slide. I think we're just about there. So that is it. This is, there's the knoll off to the right-hand side. There's the horseshoe of the Holly Farm where the school would be. There's that, that view corridor looking out to the ocean through that little stretch of Salassee, Salassee. There's a little bit of that rise in the hill over to the right and just off the, the view here is that similar rise over there. So pretty much within this zone from this knoll, the lower, I shouldn't use the word knoll, this horseshoe, you'd be able to get some sense at, at a higher elevation, be able to see out to the ocean. That's, that's our presentation for you. Well, we have, we have a plan.
I could, I just want to say one thing, that we're talking about the northern area being preserved and it's really not a, a firm decision that that's never going to be developed. It's, it's really, it's reflecting the reality of what it would take to extend services into that area right now, how expensive it would be, water and sewer actually getting across the creek with bridges or whatever it would take. So that is sort of put aside for future plan, perhaps, and possibly for preservation if, in the long run, if that's warranted for, for some reason, that decision is made in the future.
Thank you. That's much clearer than the way I explained it, that it's, that it is something that is open to decision, see right now.
It's more of a reserve than a reserve, preserving it for future.
Mr. Mayor. Lawrence, as I recall, and only for memory, but our transportation plan, we used to prove, as I recall, we painted the line road on the northern part of this property to help facilitate ingress, egress to roads in. And, you know, I don't, I guess, in your vision here, would that be on out to that, would that be accomplished in this vision?
Yes. Yes. What you're seeing here is that, is that potential road coming out all the way from Logan Creek. Connecting across at two points, hooking into this radial. It could remain on the outside and radiate all the way up, cut in here and cut across roughly where, I'm forgetting the name of that.
Yeah, so Cherry Hill.
Cherry Hill?
Yeah, it's a Cherry Hill, uh, home park. It is right over here. This is Highland down further. And this is Cherry Hill.
And we think it would be important to get other connections out of here and to study other offsite possibilities. We've been talking about them, but it's, you know, it's, we've been tasked with working within the boundary.
Yeah. There's a possibility, I think it's actually in the transportation system planning, correct me if I'm wrong, but. correct me if I'm wrong, but doing something maybe going through the Holly Farm and with the connection that further south here.
We put in a conceptual line without trying to, we actually have a budget item in the TSP that we would like to study that for a specific alignment at some time in the future.
I would assume that be in conjunction with the now, with how they know it's the schools, they would certainly be motivated to assist, you know, having a different panel.
We've had a couple of meetings with people from the school district and start, you know, starting the preliminary things. They don't know yet what, exactly what they're going to do. They just got the land, they're working on it, they want to have a place for the, for the buses and some kind of school, but I'm not sure whether it would be an elementary school or a middle school. And then possibly other uses up there as well, maybe additional housing, but they're, they haven't decided what they're going to do and what the layout would be. When we started the, we started talking with them.
If I could piggyback on that, I would just say that the sooner we get that figured out, I would suggest that as this moves forward, that that road has to be built before we build housing because Logan's Road cannot handle more traffic, especially during certain times of the year.
And the, the comment was that we needed a connection before, so the traffic isn't dumped on the Logan Road. There still is the existing road through here of Dubs Lake, uh, mobile, as well as a connection down here through Voyage as well.
Which, which has well connected over Logan or the water tank.
Right.
There are some ways out.
It does go over, but also goes down to one-on-one off the map, which is bottom.
And so corner, corner is not a safe corner to add a lot of more, a lot more traffic to the.
Where are you saying?
I said that, that corner.
Oh, the, the, the.
That, Port and Logan, that intersection, so it's not there. That's really hard.
Guys, you can't all talk at once.
Do we have a price to take yet on all of this infrastructure? Just going to have to take a guess. That's, that's, I think further down the line, that we're in the conceptual level. And I think, you know, infrastructure would be phased. Do we have a budget to do this thing? Do we have a budget set aside?
No, and this would be, remember, we're not the developer. This would be done incrementally and when we sell the land, the developer would be responsible for it. Like happens with anybody who's a developer, they'll put in the, the necessary infrastructure.
I'm always talking about roads. I just want to, just for your knowledge, the Salassee, there are people that live on it and off of it and they use it in both directions. Egress and they, so to make it one-way unless you're talking about where the development would tap in.
The mention was that Salassee would be, he was just throwing out as an idea, Salassee, right in, just in this section might be one-way with a, so if you come up this way to go northbound and this way to go southbound, but it just conceivably could be one-way in this area with, one-way south here, one-way north over here. There's just a possibility.
I just understood, and I think you are set down, you know, further towards Logan.
No, it could only be, only in that little section Richard just mentioned. It's just a concept as a way to keep that piece narrower as it is today. And just to, because it looked like, my recollection, having walked down to the water, it was, it's kind of narrow. How much, you know, instead of putting more pavement right next to the water, maybe just pave a small portion of it and then have another lane over. It would have to be studied in more detail than its concept.
I guess the, the other thing I have concern for, how do orchestrate it, is that the forest to the north area three is a great idea and it makes sense not to look in immediately for development. But given time, people become attached to their park or trees. So I'm a little concerned that, you know, I guess with every property owner, we tattoo on them, that's a duty to be developed area rather than always a forest or always a park like. Though the park like is there further out, but this is the temporary. Have you had any experience in doing this kind of thing and thirty years later bringing the bulldozers in?
Phased development, phased development of what becomes a beloved forest or park feels like, even though it might be designated as future.
Yeah. So I'm curious about dealing with the angst thirty years later.
When it's a city, when it's so connected into a city, no, I think that, I think you're valid, what you're saying is valid, that, yeah, it could become a place that people would love as, as a forest, as a park.
Yeah, so my concern is, as a developer, I want to develop it, not keep it as a forest. When time is right, in years. So how do you set the stage?
I think one thing that could be done, I think one thing could be done, well, we don't have the map here, but you know, that sixty acres extreme north is permanent open space, the thirty-five or forty acres of the knoll is open space. There's trails through there. You can have signs that says, you know, you're in the middle of the woods, but it says now entering such and such open space, now leaving open space.
That's.
And that sort of get the message.
Start setting this, yeah.
That's just one, you know, that's kind of thing that we could do. We should put it on the map that says for future developments.
Every five minutes, every flat, map on the title of the course.
For a purpose, not yet. I'm crazy.
So let me ask you a question. In the staff report, we were given a set of questions, so that's how I organize my thoughts. Are we going to go that way or are we going to just wing it and then?
Get some organized thoughts?
Well, I, based on what your staff report is.
Yep, thanks for what we do here.
But anyway, the questions were, is there, is the draft right on track? I don't know what everybody would say, but I would say yes with changes. And the second question was, are there particular things in the plan that you like or dislike? So do you want them in that order or do you want them where they're organic or comprehensive? Is my question. Do you know?
We don't have those questions, but that, I think, let's go into what you like and dislike. I think that's perfectly.
We've, we've got five questions, was it, for the council to consider, and I'm not sure, Richard, did you go over these or, I don't know where these came from.
I didn't even bring this up.
Okay, so the first question is, is the draft plan on the right track? Second, are there particular things in the plan you'd like or dislike? Third, is anything missing in the plan? Fourth, what changes have any, would you like to see in the planning? Five, you agree with the decision to defer planning for the northwest portion of the site? That's what the council intends to, to, so, thanks.
Anyway, number two, I just want to say what I like, which is, I like the RFP language regarding the smart growth principles and additional principles. Things were right on. Number two, I also like the consideration of that contiguous old basis to the north. Whatever we decide to do with it in the future, at least it's, you know, not messed with right now, that gives us all the options for the future. Also, to get this together.
So I liked the sideline, it was really, really great. I'm rightly, I don't know, I got here a few of the things, but, so that was really good to have that central location, the two, the pocket parts were really great, keeping those areas open to everybody, it's wonderful. I mean, we live here because it's beautiful and to be able to see that beauty is really important for people. So not, you know, keeping it from everybody was really nice to see. The ADUs and the perception of the garages make it look bad and then, and then, then you have these detached garages and then you have ADUs and, you know, there's, we already have, you know, Bella Beach and Olive Beach, which we cited and brought pictures, you know, though. To me and the people that I talk to, that doesn't represent the city at all. And people that don't really live there a lot, they are vacation rentals. Bella Beach is, that's a lot of that there. And so to see that doesn't feel well, doesn't, I don't like that feeling of like, oh, it's going to be like Bella Beach, which me, you know, I don't go to that park. I have children and I don't go to Bella Beach or Olive Beach. And it is different. And yes, it's beautiful and yes, those houses look nice and they're really tight together and, you know, they had, there's all kinds of things there, but, you know, it's tight in there, you know, it's, it's tight to drive in there, it's not comfortable and you do have to stop. You know, yes, there's parallel parking, but, and then what, there's four feet of street, you know, so it's, it's rather difficult. And so for me to have that kind of, you know, imagery in my mind, I don't, I, I just don't like it. It doesn't look like that from what I see, but those, you know, from what you're giving me, you're saying, oh, it would be like that. It doesn't go like that, but, I mean, and I really like the creation of the density. That's, that's great. I mean, that, that, that you show from Duane, was great. I mean, to have that really, you know, to show each block is going to be more open and more open and more open was great. So I think it's, it's wonderful. It's, it seems like you guys, you know, it seems like it's on the right track. I don't have anything to compare it to, but, you know, you're trying to cover a lot of things here. It's very, it's a very temperamental thing. I mean, we're talking about, you know, two, you know, two and a half million dollars, you know, stuff here that, you know, people have a lot of ideas for, so it's, it's a very tough thing that you guys are doing. So I really appreciate it and it's, and it's great, so thank you. Anyone else want to throw in on the track?
I just have a question. I put it into this light, but it's not really this light. I'm just, and I know this is not the site plan, so we don't have the types of trees, but did you have a type of tree in mind, the ones that are along the street, the street trees of that?
I'm not a, I'm not a landscape architect. I would generally say stick with what's native because it, it grows here, instead of trying to, tries to fight with, you know, something that comes from outside of the region, the native trees. Alder trees are remarkable, actually. I think they're, they're often, I've often heard of alders being referred to as not a great tree. It's, it's a beautiful white-barked tree and it's some additions to the.
We have one of them.
Yeah, we have a, online, we have actually three publications about landscaping in, in the area, and we, one of them is about trees that are appropriate for the area.
I did want to say another thing that I like to, but the idea of, in Fernwood, to keep that one area, I know what you're talking about there, there's some really big trees in that, Susica, and they're really good examples of what naturally grows here, so I like Susica.
I like the concept. I like the connection that you, you're connecting to the, you know, multiple places, so that feels good. The space is also welcome. It's hard for me to envision, I would like to, I think I would like to see more business opportunity. And so I, I heard your words when you talked about it, and I'm, I'm thinking retail or, or, I guess my objective is try to keep people off level one. And so I would want the things that people meet the most, whether they can walk to it or are most easily traveled within, you know, the Rose End Village area and not have to come. But I like the way you've mixed it around. It's very attractive. I'm also envisioning the school there, I hope that would really round out that whole side of the hill and area.
A lot of people will be coming to that school.
Oh, you bet they would.
And that, those are potential customers for.
I'm just hoping you can be influential with a design that it isn't sequestered off, that it really is a park, you know, a public community, not a fence, so to speak. And you'll check in the office for the, um, we need to get a seat at the gate.
That the school is integrated with the neighborhood rather than sometimes they are very cordoned off.
So I'm, I'm tracking, and I recognize it's a, you know, it's a starting point of vision. And there would be a lot of patience, so to speak.
It might be good to explain procedurally what having a preliminary master plan means. It's just, it's a conceptual plan, it's not, it's not the final word, saying this is, in this, this is the outline of what we want to have developed. Actually, the villages, normally we have a two-phase planning process in the villages. It was set up for three phases. There was a preliminary master plan for the entire development, then a refined preliminary master plan for the, there's three villages. So we did one for Rock Creek Village, which is the southern part. And then each village was broken up into several, what they call blocks, and there would be a final master plan for each of the blocks. We should do a similar sort of thing here, or it could be two parts where we have the preliminary master plan and then a final master plan, or a series of final master plans for individual areas, like for Fernwood, we could have a new final master plans for having a park, you know, maybe more this around the outside or something. So this is at the concept plan of the preliminary master plan. But the final master plan has to be consistent with this, but doesn't have to be a dinner.
How many people, how many residents this project is going to have?
We haven't calculated that. We calculated the nine-hundred-and-fifteen units. We just have to make some estimates of what those different types of units have in terms of a household. I mean, we could do a rough two-point, what? Two-point-three. And, you know, with the, two-thousand?
So like four McDonald's consent to a, a community, there has to be a certain population base, otherwise it won't go. I'm wondering if we're going to be running into that at all, if we use our criteria for establishing where our businesses go, is, well, that would be, or that would be not. But I'm wondering, should, if there isn't a formula that says you need X number of people to support a small purchase or a restaurant, to support retail, because the last thing you want to do is have the shops sit empty and then all of a sudden the magic kind of goes away.
Businesses that I have worked with, probably where it's kind of much a larger area, if you're just, this property is just part of the mission now, how far, sort of the population size to support. This is a relatively small area if you're looking at a business, they're generally going to be looking at a larger section, probably to extend in areas to the south.
So this, this kind of retail, the way it's here is going to be neighborhood-oriented retail, with small cafes, maybe small restaurants, a small grocery store, you know, not a seven-eleven, but, you know, think of like the, up in.
Nessieland Market. The Nessie.
Nesswood.
I, I grew up in a small town, we had five thousand people, but didn't have a zoning, so there's a barber shop, tavern, you know, candy store, hamburger joint, and all, they were going to get walked in, which everyone did. So I, I thought it was wonderful. And only five thousand people. And only five thousand people. You didn't get passers, a couple of people coming through town that were supporting those businesses? Not really. It was all neighborhood. You know, you'd walk into the barber shop and, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it was always been out the tavern, you know, the... So it was, it was a community that really did work.
Does anyone want to jump on? Me? Sure. So you said nine fifteen and this is a, how, how much of a percentage is this? So we have of the total area, you gave numbers as far as permanent open space, partial open space, then this development. This particular plan is nine hundred and fifteen units. What do you suppose that the further development to the north could handle as far as units?
Well, we haven't, we haven't looked at it, but I'll just tell you that when it was approved before...
It was eighteen hundred, right?
Eighteen hundred.
For the whole thing? So I mean, it's, so now, that's what I'm saying, is this fifty percent of the whole thing about, so is there the possibility to still have the eighteen hundred units?
I don't think so either.
Well, we, we took the knoll out and the knoll's forty acres. And then, um, and, and before that ever happened, the previous owner sold or gave to the tribe, what, twenty acres?
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four acres. So, so we have to reduce that from the overall amount.
So there's still the potential to have a lot. The point is, is that there's still the potential to have a, a whole large number of units. And so I just wanted to make it clear, like, it's not nine fifteen and that's it. It's nine fifteen for this part with the possibility for more units. So I just want to make sure that that's right in my head.
And I would, I would say the nine fifteen, I mean, that's, that's an approximation and I have a feeling it's, it's the high end of what, what we'd like to share.
Sure. This, we're in the conceptual stage. Um, I, so I thought, you know, these parks, do you have playgrounds planned for these parks or are they just open park, like just green space?
Sure. You know, that, I think that's down the line.
Okay. I just was curious.
You, you all would program what happens in those parks.
And then, is there water access to that? Is that, is that a, is that a viable, is that water in the bottom? Could you, is that something you want to go in?
Disclaimer. Disclaimer. I, I took the mapping that came from the city that was provided to us of all of the jurisdictional wetlands and riparian zones that you could not touch and build on. You could maybe do a stream crossing here or there. And I blanketed it with this blue color and I shouldn't have done that, I'm going to correct that because it looks like a...
Right. And I just want to make it clear that like, oh, we can have like a walk foot path around it or something, or something like that.
You could have footpath.
Sure. And then as far as missing, is there, is there a way that you can show the percentage of grade as far as walking, biking and stuff? Because, you know, it looks great like that, but you know, is there a hundred foot difference from solid C to the, to the top where you're not going to want to park at Logan Road and walk the two hundred vertical feet to the, the space?
And it's hard to see the, this map actually has the topographic lines, but it's just really hard to see right now. But yeah, we definitely have that information.
Cool.
The change, get the topo lines in black and be able to overlay that just to make it sure. Cause it's there.
There's some places where you don't, I mean, you, you're not going to want children to ride a bike, period. I mean, period. So, you know, anyway. Uh, and so, you know, again, I want to come back to those ADUs in conjunction with the VRD thing. So now you have the ADUs and could be a VRD. So now you have this...
I can't.
Cannot.
And this is R175 zone. We don't allow full-time vacation rentals in the R175 zone.
At all?
At all.
You can do the thirty day.
You can do thirty nights maximum per year in that zone.
I just, okay, okay. And then as far as the deferred planning, I just, as to pull on Dick's point of the, the, the opportunity or the availability to have those facilities easy to get, you know, also. So yes, that is available and it's not going to be, you know, really difficult to, to extend those services north, you know, so it would be nice to have it be, you know, this is going to happen, not like, oh, well, we can tie into it and it's going to take a lot of time to cut into that stuff, but rather it's set to go when, when that comes.
Well, you know, the, I think I was kind of saying in thirty years, nine hundred and fifteen units.
So it might be a hundred years. Well, I don't know.
But, but again, you know, when you think of how much Lincoln City has or hasn't grown, you know, a couple of shat...
I knew it is.
But, um, all, all I'm trying to do is, you know, there's that natural, uh, humanistic thing of you own the trees and stuff and then what's out your window? And I, I just don't want to have some, if there's something we can do to prevent the angst, you know, whenever it comes time.
I was looking more at cost savings of like, it's ready to be tight.
Yes. No, I think it helps to think of that as, as potential development.
Right.
Kind of that's the idea.
I, I want to be, I want to be clear though. My, my gut sense in having studied the topo map up here, compared it to what's down here and, you know, having laid it out to really try to figure out how many units can be up there. But when you look at the orange here, you see all this orange up here, compare it to the, the lack of orange down here, there's a little bit around this. And there's a little, there's some out here, you know, definitely close to the stream. That's twenty percent slopes and that means, you know, it's steep. You can, you can get a road along an angle, angling up switchbacks on something like fifteen to twenty percent. But it's like, I mean, it's tough and you're doing, you're doing cut and fill and you're doing retaining walls and, and then, you know, how do you fit a house? It's difficult when you actually get into the site planning layout of a house that's called a downhill slope of, of one of those switchback roads. So I would guess, I would estimate, because there's, there's some areas that don't have that steepness. You can see some tongs come out here, but then you've got this steep, you've got this steep zone here. You could get up into here. I mean, the, the last plan had a big looping road coming through somewhere. I kind of question whether, you know, how carefully they planned that. So my, the long, the short of it is, I don't think you're going to get, you know, twice as much housing as we've got down here up in there. I think it's going to be much lower and it's going to be expensive. Infrastructure and it's going to be then pretty high end luxury stuff, maybe.
Nothing opposed to that. I mean, that, that's what it is. That's what it is. Absolutely.
Well, I guess the other question then is, when you look at the other part of the plan where we are showing development, if you want more units, should we be showing more density in those areas? Should we be having more orange and less cream color? Can you switch it, Richard, to back to the plan?
And we mean, we don't mean the orange of the slopes. We mean the orange of the, we mean something, medium density.
I wouldn't want to do that though until there's a commitment for a school to be built because that's going to be the one that generates the building. I mean, that's going to produce the, the people.
We also talked to the tribe today and they were saying that they have plans where, and they think they will be increasing their employment base, you know, so, I mean, the school's not the only one.
So, is the orange multifamily? Is that...
Well, it's a, back to the list of proposed suggestions, it's, could be that the orange has some small apartment doors, you know, there's...
Right.
And, and then some duplexes, you know, set of, you know, four row houses and then a mix mixing into that, four thousand square foot, small lots, single family. So try to get that mixed even within the same zone here.
Because I, I think when you talk about our housing issues, certainly rental housing is the victim, current, you know, and, and probably, you know, always will be. So, you know, I'm, I'm kind of, when I think workforce housing, you know, more of the really affordable stuff, you know, it's, it's into the attached and, and all that kind of apartment, small clusters. So I want to make sure there's plenty of, of that available, um, because we can always down, you know, down, quite over, single family. If you can build down, you can, it ends up... Put this in a little bit of perspective, uh, if all of the development that we have had this year only took place in the villages, it would take over fifteen years to fill our nine hundred and fifteen units. So we're talking a very long period of time because not everybody will build a village and so we're talking a very long period of time.
I'm not sure that everybody who rents wants to live in an apartment. I mean, I think there are other options, duplexes or those big houses like you talked about before, um...
Well, and, and I'm agreeing, what I heard Lawrence say and, and I went full, I'm not envisioning the barrack apartment, barracks style that we see. I am envisioning, you know, maybe a fourplex, a sixplex, looks like a big house, you know, that kind of blended into the woods, um, and I have that bulk.
Yeah. You know, we've seen some, I've seen recently on the south end of Northeast, uh, Douglas Lake Boulevard, some big, long apartment builds, buildings. I think they're called Woody walk-ups, you know, it's what, three story, two, three story walk-ups. You've got apartments on two sides of a, of a central stair and then they connect that pod to the next, to the next, to the next, and they've got a big, long building. It's a pretty, pretty, it's, it's a pretty big, I don't want to, you know, what terms to use here. It's a, it's a big building that doesn't have a lot of nuance and subtlety to it's, you know, how it's working out. You can take one of that pair of, of, you know, three stories apartments on two sides and pull that out and now you have actually something that you'll find in great old neighborhoods in, in, let's say in Portland, in the old, old nineteen twenties era, in which it's a, looks like a big mansion, but it turns out that it's a fourplex, sixplex. And so there's, there are these strategies. I think you've explored the missing middle concept here. Correct me if you have, it's, it's this idea that you've got in the, in the housing market throughout America, you've got single family houses and you've got a big apartment buildings. And that's pretty much what the conventional production builders have been producing over the last fifty years or so. And they stopped a long, number of years ago, building all of the missing stuff, it's missing, stuff in the middle between single family and big apartments. That's what we're talking about here. Duplexes, row houses, mansion houses, small lot, single family. Open to the opportunities for that to happen again.
One other question that was on the list was, you can't hear me, I'm sorry. Okay. Another question on the list was, um, if there is anything missing from the plan? And the first thing I wrote was a lodge. You covered that. I see it closer, um, to the, um, to big woods, to whatever that's called. I think you had it, knew what your thought was in the center, if you put your, the map up there.
Yeah. Yeah. It's this, it's this push and pull, this dichotomy between the urban and the rural. And we were planning with that, in that location.
And I, I love the idea of a coastal lodge building, like something that, you know, it's a good old, old fashioned idea with the, with the thing. And with all the, all of the benefit that we have of where we are on the planet, that, and how many people do walk out their doors and expect to be able to go for a nice wooded walk or a beach or whatever, I think it is appropriate. So I just want to say thank you for calling that out. I see it a little bit closer, um, I think you, you were thinking of it in the center, but I, which would be great. And I see it also, it could be up and to the right, a little bit higher.
Up and to the right here?
Yeah, back, and then go back towards, towards the trees. Yeah, just some, somewhere close so people have that experience of just popping out the door. And because we do have, as you well know, a lot of tourists and, um, and we do have to accommodate them and it would be a good idea to do that in that lodge more, more closed setting because we won't be alone with VRDs elsewhere if there's, so there might be, and it might draw more people in. It might help with those old shops and, you know, it's all...
So a lodge is an alternative to, I'm hearing you say a lodge is an alternative to those VRDs.
Absolutely.
That's concentrated on a place and then it provides those, those shops and the shops we've...
Will provide the people to shop in the shops wherever the shops are in the center.
But I'm hearing, it's interesting, you're, you're sort of pulling between should it be in the core where it's blinding the activities of, you know, of a restaurant, a cafe, but also have that rural, living feeling? And we picked up on that as like, what should it be? And we said, maybe it can be both. Could the front of it be urban and meeting the, the neighborhood? The back of it be rural and flowing out into, into nature? And so that's what this red zone here was thinking through. That's part of this urban neighborhood. And then you notice how the green flows up and through here and all the way down connects to this stream out here, off property of course. And also even connects into someone here. So there's a network of green routes, greenways. This doesn't need to be green. We, you could build right here, except for in the, in the amphitheater, it's a little steep, but you could build through the forest. This is, this is not unbuildable land. It was, it was, so I said, let's, let's protect that and bring that greenway through so that you have both. You have the urban, rural, meeting face to face. What do you think of that as a...
Actually just reemphasized, we said, can't have VRDs. Can't have full-time VRDs. Can't have a VRD with a thirty nights per year. Just want to make that clear.
Just, does your concept of the lodge mean sleeping area, overnight accommodations, say, like a motel, motel?
A little nicer.
Timbered one.
Timbered. Or it could all, um, I've stayed there, it was beautiful.
Yeah, I'm sorry. But...
Well, um, and right off of that, Lawrence, I want to thank you for your presentation. I want to be something clear from the last time you and I were together in the same room. I, I don't want to come off as if I didn't appreciate your visions and I really, I'm a huge fan of developing each, living each and everything you've done. I think you've got a great creative mind and a, and a, a sense of reality, what, what would fit there very nicely. Where I differ is much like when we talked about the Nelskott Development Plan, every picture we saw was a nice sunny day and everyone was out walking and happy. And I keep going back to that is, friends of the forest, trees, I'm sorry, they, I love a tree. But how many days do you get to use it? And I hate to see all this emphasis on, we're going to all be out walking in the trees and listening to the birds and like, I don't need, I don't need editorial. But again, it's just one of these things like, okay, the reality of it says, here's what's going to be used and how often it's going to be used. The reality of it says that if we build a duplex, it needs a landlord. If we're going to have a lodge, it needs an owner and a business to run it. If we're going to have a small business and I've been a bigger part of those from day one, it, within our cities or within our neighborhoods, someone's got to make it estimate economically viable. So I go to Ron and I say, Ron, what percentage of our population lives here? And I think we're, what was it, a third or a third of the population is second homeowners?
Third of our houses are second homes.
Right. So if we eliminate one third of those people, except for during summer or weekend times, you, you've got two thirds of the, of the population to support an area. We take out vacation rentals, there's another chunk that's gone. Okay? So now we're trying to say, we're going to have all this happen in here, but I just don't, we need people to support it, to, to have the properties and maintain them and rent them and all that. So that's, I just want to keep a realistic eye to that, you know, how are we going to sustain an area and do these things at the same time? Um, the, the, the school, yeah, I mean, I can't see any of it planning or any of these prospering without a functional Bible school. Is it a grade school, middle school? I don't know. Is it just going to be like in Portland MSD or MSD, you know, Educational Service District, basically, where it's going to be a, a warehouse for all their stuff to go out to other schools? I haven't heard anything from the school district, but I haven't paid that close attention of how they're projecting a need for another school. Have we reached a pinnacle or peak with what we have now? Have we reached saturation? And where do they anticipate all these new residents coming from or new children coming from need their services? So I love the concept. I, I think it's, it can be something beautiful, but I, I would just like to be realistic about it. to be realistic about who's gonna live there, how's gonna be supported and how.
Absolutely. Mayor, let me help you one. I think you have to look at this, I ask you to look at it with or without the school. The school is only an addition, so it could stay bare and it will stay bare for the next, probably ten years, except for, but, but I think you, as you're visioning, you know what it could be at, with some kind of school. But I can tell you, the population is already here for kids, they're maxed, it's all in the north end. That's why the school district loves this property of immigrants. The other is a little bit of history, as you know, this has been a recorded plat for some twenty years. And in private hands, I think four different developers have gone bangle. And quite frankly, you can kind of see why with the original plan. I don't think it was a well-thought-out plan personally. They created a lot of their own hurdles, the developers, and you had a handful of houses built in twenty years. So the city, in my opinion, and as long as I have a vote, the city's not gonna build anything. I mean, we're facilitating and the plan is to give those developers a vision of what we as a community would like to see. They'll come in and they won't put a duplex in a lot unless they have a lot or they're gonna keep it, and all that kind of, all that kind of stuff. So I, I'm not, I hear what you're saying, is I think at the end of the day, we need investors, get someone to buy the lot.
Well, someone's gotta run these.
But we don't.
No, I understand.
The way you were saying, and I, a lot of it is for the public too, is to remind the public that we're not gonna be building this stuff, you know, we're just trying to paint the landscape so that somebody, you know, sees the advantage and sees this as an opportunity coupled with our housing needs and everything else to, to move on.
Well said, and I accept that, I just want, in planning stages, much like when we were talking about, I think we were talking about where we just kept throwing ideas out like, oh, if we had another million to spend, and you kind of go, yeah, okay, that's great, we're all getting all excited, but the reality is, and that's all I'm saying, is we're talking, gosh, wouldn't it be great if, and like you said about the Nelskott, it reigns, and so there's got to be some reality to these, to these plans. Again, I applaud you, I have no difficulty in, with anything you've said here. I could again defend maybe, I don't think we need all of the living each up and down. I don't think there is a portion of homes that don't have to be like that. And again, who's gonna move into it? Who's gonna buy? Who's gonna live there? Are they gonna live there? Can it sustain itself? That's all I can say.
Yeah. Yeah, I think in response that, for a rate that, we're painting a rosy picture, for sure, but it's more a picture of, that these things can happen, that there's a, this is the, this is the zone.
Absolutely.
In the city that if somebody wants to open a small business or build, have a variety of different kinds of housing, because I, you know, I'm working with, with developers that have been successful, the successful ones are those that are able to switch their game when the economy shifts, to, you know, go from the big lot, expensive houses, and all of a sudden, we got, oh, we have a recession back, you know, seven, eight years ago, ten years ago. They went to making, the successful ones went down to making small houses on small lots with limited infrastructure costs. And then they, but it fit in with the neighborhood because the zone that they were in, the PUD that they had achieved early on allowed, we had set it up that they're allowed to do this variety of different kinds of housing. So they were able to switch their game, and then when the economy got stronger again, they changed again. And in terms of retail, definitely retail is incredibly delicate. I wouldn't want to suggest that this is like where, you know, this is the hottest retail spot on the coast, by no means. It's, it's remote, off of the, the main highway, it doesn't have the number of cars going by, and for a long time it's not gonna have the rooftops. There's that old adage I like to say, you know, rooftops before shops, that's what, you know, retailers will always say, you gotta have, you've gotta have customers, so. So and also, the final thing with, with the retail shops, I recommend that mainly the way that it's defined in the codes, say that where we promote live-work houses. In other words, instead of building a commercial building that looks and feels and functions only as a commercial building, you build basically houses that can have a shop on the ground floor. And then, you know, checks up, some of the photos there were suggesting that it's a live-work versus a retail with, you know, ground floor retail with apartment above, that has to be a go-retail.
Ron, I had a former question, and I think I've asked this before, but our wastewater treatment, at what point do we reach capacity? How many floor households can we add?
My public works director answered that question. Let's answer yourself, Ron.
I'm Lila Bradley, public works director. And this was part of the urban renewal update that we did on West Douglas Lake Road home station, and so we've built in capacity to handle this area.
But again, you have an idea how much, at what point do we reach capacity?
Well, we have, you know, we'll be needing to do some upgrades to our wastewater treatment plant in the future, so, but at, at the time being, for the growth rate that's there, we'll cover it.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? Please. Did you, I'm sorry, just for your guys sake, did we have a time limit on your time here?
We're shooting for seven thirty.
Okay.
Okay. One of the other questions that was given to us is what changes, if any, would you like to see in the plan? And I just wanted to say that I've received comments from many people, including an adjacent property owner, owners of the Telestades condos, and from a planning commissioner. And those comments as well as my own, give me the discipline. Number one, change the name of the villages. I don't know if there's any support for that, but I, I'll tell you what my thinking is, which is, the current name refers to a failed development and stigma to go with it. It is also inappropriately named because Cascade Head is not in Lincoln City. Furthermore, Cascade Head is in a whole different county, it's Tillamook, and across the salmon river. Therefore, it sounds like we don't know where we are or what we're talking about. So, so the idea has been suggested of Wakoma Woods, and that gives a reference to more local, historical and cultural language, as well as, it's also been suggested by Patty Crowe, the planning commissioner. Additionally, I would name each of the neighborhoods something to reflect our native trees like Sitka for the centerpiece, Western Red Cedar, Shore Pine, Hemlock, et cetera. Or if everyone's in love with the Creek names, then maybe there needs to be some reference to those particular water ships and how they integrate into the environment. And just so you know, Wakoma means sea, according to John Gill's Dictionary of the Schnuff Jargon. He also states that this word is worth perpetuating. That's a old dictionary, they're familiar with it, it's pretty interesting. And the Wakoma areas in Lincoln City is where the Indians would come from inland to fish and to get their first glimpse of the ocean, so it's, it's a good spot, a good name for this area. And it's a significant name in our cultural history. So that's my, Wakoma Ridge.
Woods.
Woods.
W O D S.
Wakoma Woods. Right. And that's relevant. Where we are. Does anybody else have a proposal for a name?
You said the streams or the trees?
Oh, the trees.
Sitka, you said?
Actually, not.
That's true.
The whole area like now is being called the villages. My suggestion is, and also Patty Crowe's who was here, suggestion is Wakoma Woods. And then the neighborhoods would be called a tree name, with Sitka being the.
Sitka Village.
Well, yeah.
Cedar Village.
Hemlock. Actually, yeah.
And just, is that part of what we were discussing, kind of the names thing?
Well, you know, we had talked about, we had talked about asking you all for ideas about your names.
Oh, I heard that.
And it doesn't, I mean, we don't, we're not just trying to get you to decide that tonight, but, but we're really interested in hearing ideas.
Okay.
Perhaps we could have some community as well.
I think.
Yeah, I don't think I'm.
So, Richard, maybe you could take a minute and just describe what happens here, because we're asking these folks to tell us, are we on the right track? Where does the track lead us next?
The, the track leads us to refining this plan. And in fact, we're talking with the minority property owners today, and they both reminded us that the existing plan gives them a relatively high density, and they want to make sure that's protected, and they can keep that relatively high density. So we may see revisions in some of this for that property. Refines a plan, and again, US City Council, as the owners of the property, would have to say, this is what we want to go forward with, once, if that's, if we reach, when we reach that point, then we apply for a planning commission to approve the preliminary master plan. There'll be a public hearing of the planning commission to go over it and make decisions. We will have, in addition to the map, some conditions or limitations and some other documentation to support it. But then the planning commission will have a decision on whether to approve it or not. They can approve it, disapprove it, or approve with modifications.
If I could just throw one, this is a niggling little point here, is we are not the owners of the property, we're the representatives of the owners of the property.
Well, the city owns it, and you speak for the city, so yeah, it's a good point to support.
Make sure people go, you own the property.
You are the decision maker, so, it was a short hand up.
I understand, I just want to make it clear for the public.
We, just, an interesting point is that decisions of the planning commission can be appealed to the city council. So if someone decides to appeal the planning commission to a decision, we're gonna have to figure out whether it's appointing a hearing officer or something, or to, because I don't think it would be appropriate for the city council, either the decision of the planning commission or the city council is seeing, is the applicant.
Sure. I have one more thing about naming. And I just want to question, the naming of the goal, I've heard from a person who owns property adjacent to the area, that in the old days, or long ago, it was also called Salmon Peak. I just wonder if there was any, if there's been a name, I just.
There's, there's no name for it. There is, on the top of the hill, the top of the hole, there is the US Geological Survey or Geographic Benchmark. You know, it's a concrete mine with a brass cap on it and everything. The name of that benchmark is Salmon. So if you look on a map, you'll see, on the topo map, you'll see the word Salmon. That's not the name of the peak, it's the name of the benchmark. I don't think people probably have misinterpreted that map to mean that's Salmon Peak. It could be Salmon Peak, because people want it to be, but to the best of my, my knowledge, it has no name.
One thing. Yeah, I think it's important to remember the reason the city bought this place, bought this property, was because of its natural being and its beauty and its wildlife. And that'll be the same reason people will want to move into that. And I just think it's important that we keep that in mind, if you want to maintain, if you're all looking at economic, if you want to maintain your property values and your , I think those can say, if you want to maintain the property values, and if you want to keep that, your plan is on the right, right way to doing that. Just because, you know, if you go out highway of cadence, you beautiful forest, the property with cars wrecked and stuff, so we gotta guarantee that this, you know, should be kind of the bible, that we don't allow animals that can, you know, eyesore us.
The other part of this is significance, so Richard talked about the development process, the approval process that has to go through the planning. Well, because you, the city is also property owners, you also have that process of reviewing and looking at the potential buyers and the plans that they will be submitting to them. So that's also a part of that process, and that becomes kind of phase two when this is done, and staff's out for, you know, trying to sell a phase of this, that that will be a key point in both the, trying to attract a partner and selecting somebody to become a developer.
I was reading about some of these, one of these, about a city that had a PUD that went sour. So they started moving people in there, and what happened was they didn't have much of a criteria for people to move in there, so they ended up getting junk cars, and all the good people, I don't mean, don't mean to misuse that word, but all, lost all, all the people that really had homes, so now the whole area is just complete life.
And we can, when we sell property for development, we can put limitations on it, we can put CC&Rs on it, and we can, if we can customize it to individual areas for what we want to see, what we're allowed to be developed, developed on that particular piece of property. So there's all kinds of ways we can try to prevent those kinds of things you're talking about, and people aware of that issue.
I don't know, there's something about a forest that attracts some people to dump their garbage and, you know, I've pulled mattresses out of streams, and I've never been able to understand that, they move to beautiful forests and they just trash them. Anyway, I'm done.
Richard, could you, you say there are two other owners, I know why you connect to them, or the two.
Okay. If you look down here, the southern area, there's, I think about five acres here, that's owned by, was called Nelson Creek LLC. They also own this area up here. So here and here, and then Lincoln Highlands Limited Partnership owns this property here, it's about twenty acres. So about twenty acres for each of these, because actually this goes down in the south here, there's a little tongue that comes down. This is, I think about fifteen, this is about five, and then this is about twenty, the Lincoln Highlands.
Thank you. And the condos that are already developed are on the extreme.
The existing houses, the duplexes, they're down here, the south, extreme southwestern corner.
And can you show us where the plants is related?
Plants is rude, it's kind of hard to see, it comes in about here and follows along like this, it pushes up here.
Push up here.
So it comes in here, follows along this property line, it's was up here. And I think it basically ends where, you know, it goes up to this house, and then there's a gate up here too.
Those dogs at the den house.
That's right.
Spirits the dogs.
There's a, there's a cute little dog and a, and a mean dog.
And that rectangle is a single ownership?
Yeah. Actually, if you ever look at the map, maps of the city, it's just weird because that's not the lot line, or it is the lot line, but there's, there's like three different versions of how that lays in the city, and it's just quite confusing, but yeah. But yeah, that is a single ownership, it's just a, there's just a house.
And then, Ron, I have just one last question though. I think I almost received a letter from a couple of folks concerning just this preliminary plan and where lines are falling across their properties. I don't know if you saw that one.
Did.
If you would just speak to the public about.
Go back to the original concept. I have trouble painting these.
We really did.
That's all.
We had to beat him about the head and shoulders to stop.
If you look at this piece and you can see where the dotted lines are going across, so Richard, if you will point out where the, is this?
So in particular in here, we were coloring on somebody else's property.
Yeah. And so that has been, that has been changed in the plan that you saw to reflect only the property of its own, it's a part of the, of this development. Now, there were much more that was said than just that, and all of the points that were said are as valid as anybody's points, and they are things that you should consider as, as you are contemplating how this should be developed. As far, at least, at least as far as the going outside the lines, we're back into the lines now.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one more comment about that same area, it's, it's about Logan Creek, and any development that will, that stormwater will run out of Logan Creek, it's going to cause some issues. And we all know, I think, the public works director talked a little bit about the culvert situation and how there already is stress on the creek and also that it has a tendency to rise. We have generally around low less than a hundred inches of rain in here, and there are some properties on that creek, and they are impacted to a great degree by additional water that's at that creek. So when we think about, I mean, this might not be in your favor with, but when we think about stormwater management, I think we're going to have to be really careful because it could, could very, make life pretty difficult for some folks.
There's some inadequate culverts at the, at the end of Logan Creek, but also where we allow development, there's engineering standards that has to control, have to control them so that it doesn't overwhelm downstream, and that's something we will pay close attention to, that's the detentions, we'll place close attention to that. And I know there's work about possibly, possibly in the near future fixing those downstream culverts and improving them. Also, there have been some invasive plants in that wetland down there, and to such an extent that they're filling the wetland, so it doesn't have the capacity that it did before. The Stormwater Conservation District went in and poisoned most of those plants, and I don't know if the, if the roots have gone away enough, but the, most of the plants are gone, I think, and there still are some there. So the idea is to improve the capacity of that wetland as well.
I think a lot of the lobos are gone, I think that's what you're recreating, but then that breeze has just taken over.
And I know the point has been made that it's not a natural wetland, but legally, I mean, I'm sympathetic to that legally, it's, yeah, well, it's, it's a, it's a wetland and it also has to be maintained as a wetland.
What could we have, we have a lot of businesses that we don't want to have? I'm not going to mention, but you can all think of, you know, you've got this beautiful neighborhood.
Your CC&Rs are the perfect way of doing that, I think, with its conditions, toughness and restrictions, you know, you can say, "No, not this kind of shop." Now, or you can say, "Only this kind of shop." And what you can keep in mind is this is a residential neighborhood, still residential, and we have a very limited amount of land that can be used commercially in this PDC, and we're allowed to do commercial, if it's such a, so we can, we can limit it pretty strictly.
So I guess, Mr. Mayor, the thing that, so we are ready to proceed in refining this and preparing for an application, so we'll bring that back with you. I always think it's a good idea to take things on the road and sell them, whether that be before or after you look at it again, but I always find that's a good, good thing to do. But we are ready to move forward with refining this plan and with an application to the planning commission. I don't seem to see any objections.
What we want to do after this meeting, and we've announced to people in the big mistakes, it comes to the state and talk to staff about the plan and express their ideas. City council members and planning commissioners, you may want to leave unless you want to report on the next party contact, but you'll be back here. So the staff and consultants are happy to stay for at least another hour.
I was confused by them, sorry. I don't mean to be adult, but we don't have a hearing, we don't have a, nothing, so.
There will be a hearing later, there will be a hearing later. You may, you probably don't have a hearing, but we'll see, we'll see about that. Richard will have to help attend.
So.
Who should lead, Richard?
For sure. I'm.
You're saying the planning commission should lead for sure?
For sure.
Councilors, you may hear an appeal, so maybe you.
Hear an appeal for what?
Appeal of the planning commission decision.
Okay, got me. Last thing, just to, I still see on the website, we have a meeting scheduled for next week.
No.
Is that going to be removed? There's nothing there? Okay. Do we have, just a placeholder or?
Uh, yes.
I just like to see something, is it canceled there, Richard?
Okay.
No meetings, thanks.
All right. Nothing else, Richard? Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Thank you.
I got here next, like, two days.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's too long.